Okay. It's 6:30 and we have everybody here, so I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. Oh, Scott missing? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Scott, I almost jumped the gun on you. No worries. Okay, just as a reminder, before we get started, you have to turn on your mics with the switch on top. There's a little bit of a time delay. And turn them off, although we don't have an executive session tonight. So it is 6:31. My name is Harry Fisher. I'm the Chair of the Board of Estiment Taxation. I'm calling the meeting, the special meeting of the BET to order at 6:31. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. One announcement, just so I don't forget at the end of the meeting before we get started. Keep an eye on your email and texts and things like that because Amina has advised that we have a prospective settlement and we may, will need to call a special meeting of the BET before our regular November meeting. So just be aware of that and try to respond when that comes around. Second order of business is old business. First is approval of the OPEB investment policy statement. Perhaps I'll call on Nisha to speak to this a little bit, please.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't prepared to talk, but happy to just give it. I can wing it. So we, the IPS was revised after we brought Morgan Stanley onboard, who started in August. And we had a few, the real amendments, I guess, the few, the couple of material changes are that are, the committee made a change in targets for asset allocation between domestic and international equities. And we also raised the ability to take on active management on the portfolio. The IAC voted unanimously to recommend its approval tonight. And the OPEB board, which is myself, Scott and Robert Hartveld, also voted unanimously to recommend it first to the IAC and the IAC then voted. Sorry for the unprepared remarks, but that's more or less the gist. And tonight it's in front of the full BET for approval. I think the committee got it last week, so hopefully everyone's had a chance. Happy to answer any questions, but that's the...
Perhaps you could move it for us?
I'm happy to move it. I will move the IPS dated October 29th, 2024 for approval tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Alfonso, I believe. Does anybody have any discussion or questions? Seeing none. Is there any objection to unanimous approval of the OPEB investment policy statement? Seeing none, that's approved 12-0-0. Thank you very much to the Investment Advisory Committee for all the work you've done this year on this whole big project. And it's been a big project. Okay, the second item is review and possible approval of budget guidelines for fiscal year '26. Recognize, Ms. Hargington? Perhaps to get this before us and get some comments if you like.
So I move that we approve, that the BET approved the proposed budget guidelines for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Also called the fiscal year '26 guidelines dated October 25th, 2025, together with the estimated budget. And Roland has made a modest change to the estimated budget since the one that was posted. It needed a reduction of borrowings by $10 million. That change was made by Roland and that made no change to any other line in the budget guidelines, that's estimated budget.
I'll second that and open it up for discussion. Do you have anything further to add?
Not other than, you know, what I've said before. The budget guidelines provide the guardrails for an operating budget that absorbs negotiated labor costs and terms, including steps and other prerequisites, increasing overall at approximately 3%. All of the costs in the 200s to the 800 accounts provide guidance at a 2.75% increase. This is up from 2.50% in the current fiscal year '25 budget. And other costs, including health insurance, contributions to the pension fund and to OPUS trust, are based on the best guidance from the staff available today. Revenues, we expect a 0.5% increase in property tax revenue from the grand list. This is slower than in past years or not such a large increase. The growth slowdown is due in part to implementing a new state mandated method for motor vehicle valuation. And in capital, the town has a continuing backlog of capital. And so the budget guidelines propose $50 million of additional capital to be allocated for projects in fiscal year '26. And also, given the recent presentation and approval of the BOE capital for $20 million of expenditures, the $30 million of capital remaining for the town is appropriate. Over the next five years, and this is in the text, starting with fiscal year '26, we are proposing a five-year capital plan of $350 million. While the capital plan is proposed in fiscal year '25, had $85 million for capital projects in fiscal '26, the fiscal '26 differential was pushed out into future years. It was not removed from the capital plan and will be available. So I think that's probably a quick summary.
Great, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the issue, Ms. Moriarty?
So I have a few comments to make tonight, and then I want to make some motions to the guidelines that are before us. First, this budget process, the guideline process, has been different than in prior years. In prior years, the Budget Committee would have approved guidelines before they came to the full BET. That did not happen this year. These guidelines are coming straight to the BET. The, this BET did hold a meeting last Monday evening, talking guidelines, which had been followed, the Budget Committee meeting, a special meeting in the morning, also talking about the need for some discussion and consensus on these guidelines. And despite those words, there was no consensus on these guidelines. The texts provided to the Democratic Caucus were the ones that were posted and have been moved here. There was no attempt to reach out and have discussion about some of the areas where we have issues. So pretty disappointed with the process tonight, but more disappointed about these guidelines and the substantive, substantial issues that are not addressed. And they're the same issues that I addressed at last week's meeting. They concern the capital budget level, the funding of the capital budget, and financial planning for Nathanae Witherell and the risk funds. Those are our key concerns. There are many other issues within these guidelines that are either difficult to understand or they are statements and not guidelines, which we also have a concern about. This draft also presented to us tonight includes new numbers, new forecasts, new ideas and general directions than the document we even saw last week. So I want it on the record that we're, we think that this board can do better. And we would hope that this board will try to do better in any of the work that's before us. The, the other comment, you know, in general, as I read these guidelines, I think they continue a focus on short-term budgeting and do not take into account longer-term issues, which need to be reflected in how this board does its planning. The, you know, I see again, some examples of this include the capital. You know, we're reducing capital because we have a lot outstanding, but I think that's a conversation to be had because we all know what the impact of kicking the can down the road does. It increases project costs and it does not necessarily address the residents' needs. So with that general overview, I think I'd like to, to then turn it to several changes that we want to make through amendments to this document.
Okay. You're going to, Mr. Weisbrod, you're going to turn it over to Mr. Weisbrod, then?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Moriarty. So one of the, some of these have been marked up. In fact, most of what I'm about to say is, or will say, included in markups that we made, but that were unfortunately not included in the draft that was distributed. And again, because it never really had the opportunity to get vetted or voted on at the Budget Committee, they're going to come across as new items, but they're really not. The guidelines should present conservative and prudent assessments of our expenditures. We should always strive for efficiencies and so forth, but really experience shows that it's wise to plan for steady and predictable mill rate levels. In the last seven years, we've deviated from that practice by having mill rate increases ranging from negative 2.67% in fiscal year '23 to a positive 2.8% in fiscal year '25. So to address this, I would propose the following language, and this is the amendment. "The BET's goal is to strive for consistent, moderate and predictable increases in the mill rate over time, noting that approved labor settlements are averaging 3% and noting as well that recent years have experienced wide fluctuation of mill rate changes. While many would like to see no tax increase, long-term capital contracts and needed capital spending make this desire difficult to achieve." That's the amendment.
And where would that go?
It could, it would go in the introduction to the guidelines.
So you're not replacing anything?
No, that would, that amendment would be incremental language in the introduction to the guidelines. Third paragraph. Yeah, it's in the markups that I distributed to the Chair of the Budget Committee. And third paragraph, thank you.
So you're, what you read would become the third paragraph?
That's right.
Okay. I would just note that...
I'm seconding the motion.
Okay. I would just note that this was not provided to all members of the BET.
Oh, that, that's correct. It did provide a somewhat slightly different version, but very modestly different version to, to you, Mr. Chair, and to the, well, the members of the Budget Committee. Right. And I think it was forwarded to the...
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aurora?
I think I just want to clarify to, for the public that might be listening, and the mill rate is a calculation of the overall tax spending divided by our tax, our property assessment. So tax increase can still be attributed, if you have a tax increase and your property value goes up in the same percentage, your mill rate would have no increase. So to say that the BET's goal is to strive for consistent, moderate and predictable increases to the mill rate over time isn't necessarily a statement that I think all of us would agree with. I do think it's fair to say that your spending would go up with inflation per capita and your, you know, and inflation adjusted, your property values would adjust at the same level. So your mill rate really, in a perfect world, or in a, in a, in a world where we believe in efficient spending, should really stay constant, even if your tax spending goes up. I just want to make that point. I think this sentence is really not, not accurate. So I, you know, I would not be supporting this, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the difference between a mill rate increase and a tax increase.
Any other comments? Seeing none. I'm going to call the roll. So does anybody need this to be read out again? Okay, Mr. Alcheck? Yeah, sure.
Sorry, what, what did you say, Karen?
We're labeling this Weisbrod Amendment 1, just in case there are more. So, Mr. Alcheck?
I vote in favor of adding the language.
Mr. DeShapps?
Yes.
Ms. Aurora?
No.
Mr. Selbs?
Yes!
Ms. Fasoliotis?
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Hargington?
No.
Ms. Moriarty?
Yes.
Mr. Weisbrod?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
No.
Mr. Cal?
Yes.
Mr. Alfonso?
No.
That's 6-6, so the motion fails. Ms. Moriarty, you have another motion?
Yes, my motion has to do with the level of capital spending. My motion is to change the fiscal '26 capital target to $57.6 million for the general fund and $17 million for the revenue funds and to increase the five-year capital number to $375 million.
I second.
I'll explain...
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Moriarty, seconded by Mr. Weisbrod. Ms. Moriarty, do you have more comments?
I do. Let me just explain how I get to that calculation. What's included in here, in the draft in front of us, adopts the capital plan that the Board of Ed approved at their meeting last Thursday for the one-year number. It does not adopt the Bill of Ed Plan for the five-year number. In the one-year number, I'll talk about that first. The, if we take the Board of Ed's approved number of 1907 and we add the town number from last year's capital plan of $38 million, you would get to the 57.6. There is no additional information for us to, I think at this point, to make adjustments to the town's number. I think the capital plan presented is subject to discussion at our February and March meetings. And that to modify the timing of projects is really not the purpose of the guidelines at this point in time. On the five-year number, I use the same methodology, using the five-year Board of Ed number of $167.3 million. That does include the cost for renovation of Riverside, which I do not believe the $350 million includes in the number that's in the guidelines currently. And it adopts the, the town's number. And the reason I think it's relevant to, to have the starting point of what we looked at last year or what the town looked at last year and cited as their needs is because we know capital costs are increasing. We have several large projects out there which have yet to be priced. We have other projects, which, we know there's one other large project in here at a minimum, which is the ice rink. And that dollar number that's included in the five-year plan has not been updated in several years. So I think it is prudent to be realistic and to put in the capital target numbers of the 57.6 million for the general fund, $17 million for the revenue funds, which is the amount they asked for last year, and for this current year, and as the one-year number, and the $375 for the five-year number.
I'm sorry, what was the second number?
$375 million for the five-year...
No, the, the...
The revenue funds capital of $17 million is what was included for fiscal '26 in the approved fiscal '25 budget.
Okay. It's been, excuse me, my asthma's getting to me tonight. It's been moved and seconded by Ms. Moriarty and seconded by Mr. Weisbrod. As outlined, is there any discussion, please? Okay, seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote on what we'll call Lizzy Moriarty's number one. I'll go in reverse order, Mr. Alfonso.
No.
Mr. Cal?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
No.
Mr. Weisbrod?
Yes.
Ms. Moriarty?
Yes.
Ms. Hargington?
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Fasoliotis?
No.
Mr. Selbs?
Yes.
Ms. Aurora?
No.
Mr. DeShapps?
Yes.
And Mr. Alcheck?
Yes.
That's 6-6, so the motion fails. Mr. Weisbrod?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've talked at some length about the capital planning and the capital needs over the medium term. We talk about the, and the budget guidelines note that capital will be a major focus for the BET. But there is no call in the budget guidelines to convene the BET Debt Policy Committee, nor has the Budget Committee itself held any meetings to examine the significant debt policy challenges faced by already appropriated projects. The BET's five-year capital projection points to a debt policy cliff that will hit the town beginning in fiscal year '29. So the amendment that I'd like to introduce is as follows. BET's five-year capital projection indicates that projects funded by taxes will violate our minimum 10% debt policy requirement beginning in fiscal year '29, when the percentage falls to 1.2% and is further exacerbated in subsequent fiscal years when the percentage moves into negative territory, hitting negative 12.1% in fiscal year '30 and negative 17.4% in fiscal year '31. This pending cliff needs to be addressed by careful and prudent planning. The BET Debt Policy Committee will be convened to address this pending challenge. And in the interim, the capital tax levy will be increased by $5 million to $63 million in order to start addressing the pending debt policy cliff highlighted in the published capital budget plan.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I don't know if it's been seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Selbs is seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? If I read you right, you want to increase the capital financing from an incremental $3 million to an incremental $5 million?
Yes, and also to recommend that we convene the Debt Policy Committee. Put it in, into the, into the guidelines.
Okay, I'm going to comment that, you know, there, there are lots of methods, levers, abilities to address future problems. But I oppose taxing the residents, taxpayers today for a future obligation. So I will not be voting in favor of this. Ms. Hargington?
So I'll just add to those comments that anticipating that, that capital will continue to increase. Last year, the BET committed to increase the capital tax levy by $3 million annually, which increases the amount set aside in the fiscal year '26 budget for current or future debt service at $61 million. In addition, in the fiscal year '25 budget, an additional $2 million to $5 million was set aside, which brought the number to $58 million. That is sufficient funding reserves to service the town's debt on its regular schedule and to preserve its AAA rating.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Moriarty?
I just want to challenge really that last statement. If you utilize the funding schedule that's included in our budget book and put in the assumptions you just indicated, and even bring down capital for fiscal '26, '27, '28, '29 to historical levels, we still have a funding problem. The funding problem is driven by the overlap of the large projects we have that have been already appropriated of Central Middle School and Old Greenwich School, necessary projects that were delayed for a long time, but they're now, have been funded and they're started. And I think we're all supportive of that. But if you look at the financials that have been provided to us by our staff, we are not able to using, are not, we do not service the debt appropriately so that we do run into a problem for several years. There are only three levers to change the outcome of that. The first one, which is to lower the capital spending, we've already crossed that bridge because if you bring the capital to zero, which is unrealistic, there is, the, the problem, it goes to zero in a year. That's the best-case scenario, and zero is not a viable level of capital spending for the town. So changing capital projects isn't going to help us. The, so you can change the amount you dedicate in cash towards a capital tax levy, or you can change the maturity terms of bonds we have not yet issued, which would spread out the debt service and allow us to be able to service that capital. This board has not taken up those issues. We haven't, as a body, worked together to go through the assumptions. I would just like to get to a, a agreement on assumptions on the model, not even the solutions to it, but it takes a conversation to get to that point.
Thank you. Mr. Weisbrod?
Yeah, and I would also challenge the comments made by the Chair. Although I don't believe that this is taxing for future obligations. The point is, it's taxing for existing obligations, i.e., Central Middle School and Old Greenwich School are already appropriated by this body and by the RTM. So that's an existing obligation, and it's not an imaginary or hypothetical future obligation. All we're saying is, let's not wait for the cliff to hit us and then make abrupt and disruptive changes to the community. Let's start planning for this now. These are existing obligations, not phantom, future, hypothetical ones.
Sorry, I got distracted as I think people are thinking there's voter training in here. There's some people out in the hall, Samantha, maybe you could let them know to this down in the basement in the cafeteria. That was originally the use of this room. Any other comments? Seeing none. We'll proceed to vote on Mr. Weisbrod's second motion. Mr. Alcheck?
I vote yes for inclusion.
Mr. DeShapps?
Yes.
Ms. Aurora?
No.
Mr. Selbs?
Yes.
Let me just go through this first.
Well, I want to say my no, but I want to say it into the mic.
Oh, okay.
So people can hear me.
Sorry.
No.
No. I'm a no. Ms. Hargington?
No.
Ms. Moriarty?
Yes.
Mr. Weisbrod?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
No.
Mr. Cal?
Yes.
And Ms. Alfonso?
No.
6-6, the motion fails. Okay, do we have any other motions? Ms. Moriarty?
So I'll make the motion first and then explain it when I have the opportunity. The motion is to add the following sentence in place of several sentences in the document. The sentence is, "The BET wants to better understand special education grant funds and the staffing model, comma, the high-needs enrollment trend and staffing needs, comma, and enrollment overall enrollment trends and the forecasts," period.
Okay, I'm sorry, where is this being added?
So this is where it gets a little bit difficult to understand. The comments in the draft given to us on the Board of Education in area, it is on page three, "Areas of Operating Budget Focus for Departments and Board of Ed Schools." There are two large bullet points on the Board of Ed... There are two large bullet points on the Board of Ed. I would eliminate, I would end the sentence, so the first sentence under Board of Ed Schools operating, that budget driver sentence should have a period after special education costs, and the next, the rest of that sentence and the following sentence should be deleted. And then, under Board of Ed Schools and Facilities, the sentence that starts with an enrollment decrease of 143 students, at that point, the rest of the paragraph should be deleted and replaced by the sentence that I put in.
Okay, could I ask you to read the sentence again, please?
Sure. BET would like a better understanding of the special education grant funds, enrollment, and staffing models. I did add another word there, enrollment, comma, high-needs enrollment trend and staffing needs, comma, and enrollment trends and forecasts.
Okay.
Where did that go, Leslie?
That's been moved, is there a second? I'm sorry, who's seconded? Mr. Selfes, seconded? Discussion, Ms. Moriarty?
Yeah, I just want to say. To explain it further, I think the way that these guidelines are written are prejudicial, first of all, and don't really get at the issues or that we want to address, and secondly, don't recognize the information that's been shared with this board over several years about the trends in our special education budgets and why they're increasing. The increasing percentage of the population that are high-needs, either English language learner, special education, or free and reduced lunch population, are increasing their percentage of the total population of the school's enrollment. And all of those categories of children require additional resources in order to have the student achievement levels that we would like to see. So, the language in our guidelines need to reflect what we already know about the schools. We know the facts that I just stated. We also know, and we have been told, that the Title I grant, which helps offset costs for special education, has been reduced by $800,000 to the town. That grant covers special education staffing, not all of it, but some of it. $800,000 equates to eight, six to 10 staff members, it depends which staff members are in there. But there's language in here about not moving, not having any increase in the headcount as a result of moving grant employees, grant-funded employees over to the TOO. So, as I said, I think the comments and the way the guidelines are written are not reflective of what we know about the Board of Education, of what we know their challenges are, and of the direction that it's going. The enrollment in this current year, which is lower, we also know the kindergarten age was changed, and that in fact impacted the headcount, the enrollment for kindergarten. I would expect, they would expect and will tell you, that number one, our pre-K enrollment was higher than expected because those children did not go to kindergarten, but that's true throughout the community, so that there will be a higher kindergarten population next year. It also follows projections, enrollments exceeded projections in the past two years. This year, it was under, the projections were higher than actual enrollment, but last year and the year before, they exceeded the projections, and so there may be an averaging out of challenges and trends. The enrollment report was presented to the Board of Education on Thursday. I think many of you have seen it. It talks about a moderating of the decline. I think we'll have another one or two years of a moderate decline, and then the enrollment's going to flatten out. It is not a precipitous decline thereafter, but the projections are projections. And so, the rationale here is, we know more about what drives Board of Ed spending. It's not reflected in the way this wording is, and it's very, as I said, prejudicial against the school's budgets that we've seen and we expect to see.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a record vote, starting with Mr. Alfonso.
No.
Mr. Cowell.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
No.
Mr. Weisbrod.
Yes.
Ms. Moriarty.
Yes.
Ms. Targington.
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Fasoliotis.
No.
Mr. Selfes.
Yes.
Ms. Aurora.
No.
Mr. De Shamps.
Yes.
And Ms. Rollcheck.
Yes.
Okay, six-six, that fails. Could I ask, how many more motions are there?
Two more, one from me and one from the.
Okay, I'd just like to point out that we're being asked, you know, we've been roundly criticized for process and procedure at the last meeting. We have nothing written in front of us. I just want the public to know we're being asked to vote on things without having been sent to us in written form or provided this evening.
Take issue with that because we circulated a markup to the Budget Committee the day that we received the draft that was then submitted for public distribution without including any of the markups that were basically the essence of these amendments. So, I do take issue with that.
There was no request to circulate further.
Well, I, it's up to the Chair of the Budget Committee. You not only didn't hold a Budget Committee meeting, you never really acted upon nor responded to the markups that we submitted.
So, it would have been helpful to see it tonight.
Be that as it may, we will try to be efficient. There, at least there are two more, as far as I'm aware. I have one, and I believe Ms. Moriarty has one. If I may.
Excuse me, would you defer to Ms. Aurora, please?
Just really quick, David, are you looking, the document that I have in front of me is just the amended, the redlined version that Mr. Weisbrod had sent around to the Budget Committee. The edits that Ms. Moriarty just went through are not part of that. So, I don't know if there's another document, Mr. Weisbrod, that you're referring to, because what Mr. Fisher is saying is that we don't have this in front of us. We really don't, even in the version that you sent around. The comments that Ms. Moriarty just made are not in that section at all. I'm looking right at it right now. So, just an FYI, I don't know if there's another variation or version, but just to be clear, we do not have these edits in front of us.
Just to respond, as I said in my introductory comments, the process for these guidelines has been so messed up from the beginning. There was no opportunity for meeting to discuss any of these changes. This document that we're looking at now was only circulated to us shortly before, hours before it was posted for the agenda, and so, you know, getting together to coordinate comments, to get input, it takes, I mean, I'm sure Ms. Targington would say that's why it took her so long to turn a document around. It takes a while to do that. So, we've done the best we could in reacting, but you're right, this is a reaction because we were given no time and no ability and no good process to really do our work.
Yeah, I do, because normally when we do amendments, we do circulate copies of the wording to our, you know, our board, and, you know, that's been the process. Even when we do it on the fly, we have, you know, somebody going and typing it up and bringing it back to us. That process wasn't filed, followed here. You also received this, you know, last Friday, I believe, and we got comments, or at least the Budget Committee got comments that we saw from Mr. Weisbrod. So, you know, certainly, you know, if it had been, or I don't know if it had been circulated to your caucus, if other people had had comments, they could have been forwarded that way as well before tonight's meeting, so we would have the opportunity to see what we're talking about. You know, I take, you know, exception to what you're saying, you know, this is where we are right now. You're offering amendments that we haven't seen before, so, you know, I don't see how we can vote in the affirmative when we don't, you know, when we're just hearing it for the first time.
Normally, before a guideline, budget guidelines go to the BET, they're acted upon, deliberated upon, and voted upon by the Budget Committee. So, A, the Budget Committee did not deliberate on any of the markups that were in the draft that you've seen, that I included. I'm a member of the Budget Committee. There's been no feedback from members of the Budget Committee whatsoever, not a thing to all the extensive markups that you've seen, number one. Number two, there was no vote at the Budget Committee. So, this is not a normal process. It's an abnormal process. And while it would be preferable to type out each of the amendments, the bulk of them are included in the draft markup that was circulated to the members of the Budget Committee and to most, if not all, of the members of the BET. So, we find ourselves in this predicament because procedures that have been in place for decades here at the BET have not been followed.
Look, we all knew what the purpose of this meeting was tonight, and certainly, if there were amendments, they could have been provided in advance. And to the extent that we're doing this, I mean, we get criticized all the time for doing amendments on the fly, and yet, you know, here we are doing amendments on the fly. So, I take exception to what you said, and, you know, we can move on, but.
Well, let's move on.
I just, you know, this process is totally.
I think let's move on.
Let's move on. Mr. Weisbrod, I'll recognize you to provide another motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This pertains to the Nathaniel Witherell. I think all members of the BET are aware of the significant operating losses and drain that has been caused by deficits at the Nathaniel Witherell. We share in that concern. However, as a matter of prudent budgeting and planning, dealing with realistic numbers, we would make, I'm going to make an amendment in a moment. The only solution to the matter of the Nathaniel Witherell is through a strategic decision that is still forthcoming. That is the way forward as it relates to what we do and how we perceive the Nathaniel Witherell. In the meantime, the existing guidelines talk about a $500,000 operating budget. It's known, and it's been conveyed to the BET, that the management of the Nathaniel Witherell is striving to manage the entity to break even before debt service and capital, and that's been the goal. But if you look at the debt service and capital numbers, those are 1.6 million for debt service and 1.3 million for capital. So, on the surface, there's a 2.9 million deficit inherent in the plan, if it's achieved this break-even plan, that we simply can't close our eyes to if we're trying to plan prudently and being fiscally responsible. I wish there were no deficits. All 12 of us wish there were no deficits at the Nathaniel Witherell. However, it is what it is, and so we have to plan prudently and fiscally for the issues that are facing us. And so, therefore, I would, the amendment is that we at least meet halfway and add $1 million and a half to the guidelines to address what may be a best-case scenario, and that is break even before debt service and capital.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add 1.5 million.
Well, it's 1 million, because there's a half a million in there now.
1 million to the existing $500,000. Is there any discussion? I would just note for the record that this would change a practice that's been in effect for a few years of, in each budget, funding prior year losses. So, I will not be supporting this. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call the roll. I can't remember which direction I went, so I'll start at the top. Mr. Rollcheck.
I vote yes for inclusion.
Mr. De Shamps.
Yes.
Ms. Aurora.
No.
Mr. Selfes.
Yes.
Ms. Fasoliotis.
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Targington.
No.
Ms. Moriarty.
Yes.
Mr. Weisbrod.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
No.
Mr. Cowell.
Yes.
Mr. Alfonso.
No.
Another six-six, so that fails. You have another motion?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Moriarty.
So, this motion has to do with the risk fund, and just like Nathaniel Witherell, when it comes to good financial planning, looking forward, our risk fund is expected to be substantially depleted by the end of this fiscal year. In the past 10 years, except for two, the BET has augmented this risk fund to get it to about the $3 million level. We know, as an operating entity, we unfortunately do have risks and settlements that we have to deal with. So, given that the risk fund is depleted, it's good financial planning to build it back up. Again, because of the impact on the bottom line, if we want to just build it back up to a minimal level or start it over two years, I would say a million-five is the minimum number, but 3 million is the typical level. And my motion is to, what did I end it up at? Is to add $3 million for the risk fund. I do want to make one other comment.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Mr. De Shamps, or Mr. Rollcheck?
Either one.
Either one.
Again, on the process for these changes, and I recognize it is hard to approve specific wording changes without seeing language in front of you, but the issues we're raising have been raised from the beginning. The language of the guidelines, draft guidelines, that we received on Thursday very late or Friday afternoon were different than the language that was circulated at the Budget Committee on the Monday before. So, you asked for a very quick turnaround in order to get language and to work through the numbers, and so, I think the members of this board, at least I can speak for myself, worked diligently to try to work through the numbers and get the justification as far as the background and what we approved, and are making these motions consistent with the items that I have presented at previous meetings. So, this particular motion is the risk fund to increase by $3 million.
Ms. Fasoliotis.
Just as an added comment, the guidelines were different that you received on Friday because the Budget Chair sought to incorporate a lot of your comments that were incorporated into this document. So, most of the changes were those that you contributed. You know, as far as the risk fund is concerned, again, you know, this had more importance when it was part of our, our.
Fund balance.
Fund balance, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to think of the words, the fund balance. But now, it's no longer part of our fund balance, and I would even question the need for a risk fund, quite frankly. So, I'm not supporting this motion.
Any other comments? I would support that thought that its usefulness has perhaps passed us by. Okay, I'll call for a vote on what I'm going to call Leslie Moriarty, number three. Mr. Alfonso.
No.
Mr. Cowell.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
No.
Mr. Weisbrod.
Yes.
Ms. Moriarty.
Yes.
Ms. Targington.
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Fasoliotis.
No.
Mr. Selfes.
Yes.
Ms. Aurora.
No.
Mr. De Shamps.
Yes.
And Ms. Rollcheck.
Yes.
Six-six, that motion fails. I think we have one more.
Not from me, that's it.
Is that it? I can't count anymore. Okay, is there any further discussion on the budget guidelines as presented? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on the guidelines. Mr. Alfonso.
Yes.
Mr. Cowell.
No.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Weisbrod.
No.
Ms. Moriarty.
No.
Ms. Targington.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Fasoliotis.
Yes.
Mr. Selfes.
No.
Ms. Aurora.
Yes.
Mr. De Shamps.
No.
No.
And Mr. Alcheck?
No.
Okay, that's a six-six vote. I will cast the tie-breaking vote in favor, so the budget guidelines pass 7-5.
7-6.
7-6.
7-6, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with numbers tonight. Okay, there is no other business to come before us. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Raffano moves.
Seconded.
Second.
Ms. Jansen seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn at 7:21.